Good. Okay, I think we're good. It is eleven o'clock. We are here on Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four at eleven AM for our regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. If we can all silence our cell phones, we can start with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Take a quick look at the agenda and see if there's anything that needs to be moved or removed.
I don't see anything that would need to be moved.
I'm going to approve today's agenda. I'll second it.
Okay. Let's call for comments. Good. Um, let's vote to approve.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved as posted with no changes. Um, community information items and legislative updates. One quick legislative update. Adam Ducharme, uh, our tourism director, has been working along with our lobby team on the CR US bill. That's the bill that helps to sort of clarify, um, the liability around, uh, public access through, uh, private lands, um, and sort of what the liability is on, um, or adjacent to in some cases, um, private landowners. So that's great. That's a big issue for Lake County events and residents' access. Um, so I'll hold it there on the pledge updates.
That's great. Do you want to, or just go ahead? Sure. Super quick. Um, I'll just, you know, mention it until we get to midsummer. Um, but again, uh, planning on wildfire mitigation work along County Road seventeen, um, doing right-of-way work, and then, um, folks and neighborhoods and individual property owners have the opportunity to, um, reach out and engage and ask for some assistance on defensible space in their own private properties. Um, another correction I would just like to make, uh, something in the paper, the comic in one of the last couple of weeks papers, um, had the groundhog crying over, uh, an image of the county, a newspaper saying the county is, uh, one point two million over budget, um, and I just, with as much, uh, challenges as our local districts across our community have had, um, I just want to reiterate how proud and how much work that we have put into actually passing a balanced budget at the county, and we are not over budget. Um, and we also, in fact, um, reduced our mills, um, because we were in a good place. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that that's known. Thanks.
Um, cool. Well, uh, first just want to, um, acknowledge and say thank you to Dr. Massey for her service in Lake County. Um, as we had seen in the, in the paper, there was a mutual parting with, with her and the school board, um, so want to publicly acknowledge, um, her leaving and, and just say thank you for her service in our community. Um, the school district is, um, still working through, uh, budget numbers and the finance committee has been super busy dividing and conquering. Um, and those meetings are open to the public if anyone would like to attend and listen in. Last week, we had a presentation from the Colorado Department of Education, um, and that reporting is available through the school district if you're interested. The school board, I believe, is also seeking a board member, um, so that opening is, is there as well. Um, the RFP for Transit Services is in its final stages of preparation and should be ready to go out this week, um, or early next week at the latest. Um, we're putting that RFP out to Contract for Operations Services and, um, I think Chris and I just have a few things to talk about on that and then we'll be ready to put that out for a bit.
Uh, you reminded me, Commissioner, I also, uh, saw that Skeet Cooper was soliciting a board member of interest, so, um, spread the word there as well.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Um, sorry to go out of order.
Oh, you're good.
Um, uh, now for our public comments. Don't see anyone raising their hand in the room. Any public comment online on the Zoom?
Hi, I maybe have a little bit of a question. I'm here with Senator Higginlooper's office covering for Jeanette, who is your usual attendee for your meetings. Uh, when would it be most appropriate for me to jump in?
You, you, you are the first agenda item, so you're, you're up. Yeah, no, you're, 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 you're perfect. And I think, I didn't see anyone raise their hand, so, um, let's go right into agenda item number one. So, um, yeah, thank you so much for, for taking the time to, to address this. And, um, yeah, the, the, the floor is yours whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much. I didn't mean to jump in there. I was just sure. Um, hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Azrael Madrigal. I am one of the regional directors for Senator Higginlooper's office. I know you are, of course, used to seeing my wonderful team member, Jeanette. Jeanette will be, uh, returning to our office by late March, not early, early April. So I will, I know you, I know I have, uh, reached out to y'all via email, so this is the face to the email, but I, I will continue to be your contact for the next month or so when it regards to any federal updates and/or letter support, uh, and for any federal funding opportunities. Um, as far as, as a general update from, from what Senator Higginlooper, uh, has been up to, there has been, um, upcoming, there are gonna be, we are gonna be hosting two different webinars around the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act reauthorization and the National Apprenticeship Act, um, authorization. Uh, so I believe I have shared those official invites to y'all via email, but I'm happy to share them to any other community members or economic development leaders or workforce leaders within Lake County where that information would be the most relevant. Um, I think right now, uh, these are very two key components, very two key priorities for the senator around workforce and providing viable opportunities for our younger generation entering the workforce. Um, so those are two opportunities that are gonna be coming up at the end of February, so please let me know if you're interested in attending, or again, if I need to get that information to other leaders within the community, I'm happy to do so. Uh, the other kind of big piece is that we have began the process for the twenty twenty-five congressionally-directed spending. Um, as you all are aware, if you're keeping up with the news, we are still in a continued resolution, uh, government through March first and eighth, but our team in collaboration with Senator Bennett's team is doing a joint, uh, interest form, um, so we can get acquainted with some of those projects that may be coming from the communities. So that interest form is due by March fifteenth, and again, I had said that previously out via email, but I can a hundred percent reassure her after today's call. And this, of course, is just an opportunity for us to get acquainted with those projects. Uh, another thing I will mention is that you may have also received it from Senator Bennett's team, same form, we are collaborating, no need to, to submit twice. And this, of course, is not an official application, but it's just, again, an interest form. So, uh, I know, uh, before Jeanette, when, when I leave, she did, I mean, I had some great conversations with her about some of the conversations that she had in Lake County with last year's, um, last year's request. Um, and of course, those who were awarded last year, they may still be waiting to get their projects funded, they'd also get communication from our office regarding our continued advocacy for those projects. Um, but we're kind of getting ahead of the, of, of the term, uh, in preparation for this coming year. Uh, so those were kind of the primary updates that I had for y'all today, but happy to answer any questions.
I don't think I really have any questions right now. Thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think that's good. Thank you for, yeah, and again, thanks for coordinating smoothly on the, on the twenty twenty-five CBS requests. That's great.
Of course. Well, thank you all so much for your time. I'm gonna hang out and listen in for a little longer, but, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions or anything that I can, um, help with.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to agenda item number two, Arwick?
Yeah, can I do a small intro?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Um, so we have our, uh, Arwick forester soon, who is, uh, going on to, uh, bigger things in his career, Andy Lurch here with us online. Um, I invited Andy to speak with us. Uh, he recently gave an overview to the Arwick board, um, of the success and all the projects that we've been working on, uh, in Lake County. And, um, I think, I think with, with as few people as Arwick has in doing the work on the ground, it is, um, and, and really all of us, I suppose, in our organizations, it's hard to celebrate our successes. And Andy did a fantastic job summarizing the amount of work, um, that they've been doing in Lake County. And, uh, I want to take the opportunity to express how grateful I am and I think our Lake County community is for the work that he's been doing with Arwick and that Arwick will continue to do. Um, uh, they have, they have secured over three few, three, four million dollars of funding, um, for the community to do infrastructure work, wildfire mitigation work, um, and support other partners in the work that they do, um, such as Trout Unlimited or Department of Reclamation and Mine Safety doing mine mitigation and river restoration. Um, so they've been a huge, uh, huge hub for that coordination and to make, uh, this work continue in the community. And so, um, with that, I will thank Andy, um, and, uh, hand the, uh, floor over to him. Thanks for being with us.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Mudge. Um, uh, my, it says, um, that screen sharing is disabled.
Oh, let me fix that.
Can I get help with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for the introduction. Um, I've been working for Arwick for almost five years now, and it's been, um, it, it's, it's really hard to, to step away. Um, we've done some really incredible things, and I think we, we've got a lot more happening. And, and Lake County has really been a focal point for us. Um, Lake County's at the headwaters, so, um, it's important for all water users and, and so that's been, um, one of the, the main areas that I've been working on so far. Um, okay. All right. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna give a, a kind of a little bit of context in just about some background, just to help you guys out with, um, so we're kind of on the same footing with forestry stuff. Um, and, um, then talk a little bit about management options and then dive into the projects that we have, um, up here in Lake County. So the, a lot of this context was for our board members that aren't as familiar with Lake County, but, um, so I, I've got some pictures here of all the, the water infrastructure. There's a, being at the headwaters, um, Lake County is really important. Um, there's, water is important for the community, but it's also, um, got a larger importance for, um, everybody that's downstream, all water users, agriculture. Um, but then, um, the front range uses a lot of the Lake County water for their municipal water supply. Um, but one thing I will point out also is, um, there's a few attributes that are important forestry-wise. Um, one is the high elevation in Lake County. Um, that has a lot of effect on the forest. Um, another is that extensive mining history, so a lot of the trees are roughly a hundred and twenty years old. Um, and we think a lot of the potential for post-fire impacts, so after the wildfire, um, what might happen? And one of the things that we've thought a lot about is that, um, after you have a wildfire, you get, um, erosion and sedimentation, um, and that's happened throughout Colorado, but in particular in Lake County, that could be mobilizing mine waste and tailings into our waterways, which would be particularly devastating, you'd think. Um, so that's another thing to keep in mind. And another, um, important attribute is that, um, Lake County is almost three-quarters, uh, federal land, most of that being on the San Isob, San Isabel National Forest. Um, so that's an important, um, thing to be thinking about when we think about managing for forestry and, and fuels. The principal, um, tree species, as you probably, um, realize, is lodgepole pine. Um, it makes up almost twenty-five percent of the, the forest cover or land cover in Lake County. Um, and it's nearby communities and values, so that's another thing that makes it really important. Um, and so that lodgepole is the one that's kind of in this like brownish color. So it's near, near Leadville, near most of the, um, homes, residences, uh, near water. And, uh, and so that, that's gonna be my focus here is talking about lodgepole pine. And important, and so I want to give you a little bit of a rundown on, on how lodgepole pine grows. It's a little bit different than, say, um, the front range and ponderosa pine in frequent fire environments. Um, lodgepole pine is adapted to this high elevation environment. And after a, some sort of disturbance, like a fire or a wind event, lodgepole pine is gonna quickly colonize the site, like you can see on the top picture, and it grows really, really dense. It outcompetes all the other species, and it grows at that high density until some other disturbance event happens and it starts the cycle over again. Um, it, the good news is that fire is not very frequent in these, um, environments. It doesn't happen very often, um, generally on the order of one hundred to three hundred years or sometimes even longer. Um, but the bigger issue is that when it does happen, it's usually high severity. So, um, fire often gets into the crown and it moves crown to crown very quickly because of that, that density. It's also got some other, um, forest health considerations, um, that aren't really related to fire, but as a forester, I'm always thinking about these things as well. Um, one is mountain pine beetle. Um, so that's, uh, an image on the top. Um, mountain pine beetle swept through in the, the two thousands in Colorado, but Lake County largely avoided that. So, but, um, it's a, a potential thing that could happen in the future, and it's a, a small beetle that can erupt and kill lots of trees. Um, and so forest management can help reduce the, um, the impacts if mountain pine beetle were to, uh, be present. So, um, that's something that I'm always thinking about. And the other is dwarf mistletoe, which you can see on the bottom. It's a natural, um, it's a parasitic plant that's just part of the environment, um, but it does weaken the trees and it creates these large, what we call brooms, witches' brooms, um, that, uh, deform the tree and it sucks the energy from the tree and eventually weakens it and kills it. Um, I think we, we see a lot more of the dwarf mistletoe, um, in today's day and age because we don't have as much fire, um, as part of our ecosystem. And so it's a little bit more prevalent than it probably was in the past, but there's some forest management things that we can do to, to help address that. But that's another kind of, uh, background thing to be thinking about. So what are our options? We kind of have, um, four different treatments that we generally do when we're, we're managing forests, the lodgepole pine forests. The first one I'm sure you're familiar with is thinning, um, reducing that tree density. And, and we're also thinking about, uh, we're cutting trees but, um, leaving trees on site, um, and trying to really, um, reduce the, um, continuity of fuels, both horizontally and vertically. So if fire were to come through after a thinning, hopefully it doesn't make it up into the crown, and hopefully it has, uh, some barriers as it moves across the landscape and doesn't, uh, pick up and become a, a large fire. Um, there's some challenges with thinning, though. With lodgepole pine in particular, um, it's a shallow-rooted tree species, and it can easily fall over, especially if we, if we thin too heavily, um, then it's susceptible to, to blowing over or having wind throw, as we call it. Um, and, and the other is that if, if it's got that dwarf mistletoe infestation, um, it's likely to, you're gonna have younger trees coming in under that thinned forest, and they're probably gonna get that infection right off the bat. So, uh, that can be problematic as well. So in that case, we would generally, if there is that dwarf mistletoe present, um, we really want to look at what's called patch cuts. Um, their patch cuts are, are like miniature clear cuts. They create, uh, they break up that, um, sea of lodgepole pine, um, so that hopefully as fire moves through, it changes that dynamic and it doesn't get that, um, it, it can't be as severe, um, or intense, and, and it also gives, uh, fire managers opportunities to hopefully fight that fire. Another option is, uh, shaded fuel breaks, and, and a lot of times we use those to give firefighters, um, tactical, um, opportunities to fight fire. So a lot of times, these are along roads and to protect, uh, values. Um, and so a lot of times, that's really like a heavy thinning, um, specifically designed to, to protect values. And then we have defen, defensible space, which, uh, is meant to protect structures. I'm not gonna talk a whole lot about that today, but that's a whole, um, a whole aspect we could do a whole presentation on. Um, so I kind of think of work that we've done as kind of prior to the, uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan update and, and after that. And that was a real pivotal moment, I think, for Lake County. Um, so we had, in twenty eighteen, we had a, a state grant from, it's called the Forest Restoration and Wildfire Risk Mitigation Grant. Um, and we really, I would say that that was kind of in an older model where what we would kind of call today, uh, random acts of conservation. There was some, uh, emphasis to try to treat the south of Turquoise Lake, but really, we took anybody that was interested in participating. Um, so the largest area that we did treat was, uh, on High Mountain Institute. That's a picture on the top. We did some thinning there. Um, on the bottom, you can see a landowner that was working on their own property that's, uh, kind of north of Leadville as well. Um, we also did another large project, actually, we're still wrapping that one up today, um, working in Grand West Estates, north of Leadville. Um, I think we've worked with seventeen landowners now. Um, it's been, this is a defensible space project largely, um, also creating a fuel break. Um, and really trying, the idea with this was to try to connect with the Forest Service, um, projects on, that's part of the Tennessee Creek Project. Um, and there's been a lot of, I mean, I think there was a lot of really good work there to, um, reduce the, the potential that fire could move into this community. Um, and it's right there near the Arkansas and Tennessee Creek, and I think could, um, potentially alleviate, um, watershed problems, um, and reduce the likelihood of, of high severity fire there. And then we have the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and I think, um, so that, it was a really complex modeling effort. Uh, I'm sure you guys are, are aware of some of what went into it. It's pretty complicated, and I'm not gonna dive into this flow diagram, but basically it took a lot of, um, the community values. We looked at what, um, what, what they call them, high-value resources and assets. Um, we figured out what those were and worked with stakeholders to figure out how fire would affect those assets and tried to, um, understand how and where we should be working to reduce the likelihood of, of high severity fire to impact those values. So that's what all the, it, all that work resulted in these maps. Um, and, uh, and so the, the one on the left shows where fire would have a negative impact and it would really have a negative impact throughout a lot of the county. Um, but then on the right, we have kind of the, probably the most important map that really shows us where we should be going and what we should be doing. Um, and, uh, a, a bit of a, it's tiered in, in different, different levels so that we, uh, understand where we could get the most bang for our buck. So essentially, working in these areas will do the most to reduce the, the risk, um, to wildfire and get the most, um, get the most risk, risk reduction to those identified resources and assets. So that's now driving where Arwick and then other partners are also working. And, and I think that's what, been one of the really cool things that came out of the, uh, CWPP update, is that now, before the CWPP, it was really the Forest Service doing some work and, and Arwick, um, doing a little bit as well. Um, but now I think there's a whole lot more focus because there is this plan, and, um, we've got more partners that are interested in doing work. The Colorado State Forest Service is doing a lot, um, then, um, the National Forest Foundation, um, and I think there's gonna be a continued emphasis to do mitigation work in Lake County from here on out. So I'm kind of gonna shift gears now into sort of what we have kind of now and coming in the future. Um, the first is, uh, the Lake County Community Chipping Program, and this is a grant that we just recently got. Um, it's a, from the Colorado State Forest Service, their, um, Forest Restoration and Wildfire Risk Mitigation Grant, or FORWORM for short. Um, and in the past, we had tried, uh, to get a similar grant or the same grant, um, where we asked for a lot of infrastructure or capital equipment to run a chipping program, and it, it was not successful. So we kind of switched things up and said, well, why don't we just use what we have available? So, um, we've partnered with the county, um, and with Colorado Mountain College, and we're using the CMC chipper, um, and that's a, a Lake County dump truck, and we're using those to, to just get a, kind of a grassroots, um, chipping program going. Uh, we're hoping to work with six communities each year, um, through twenty twenty-six. Uh, and, and so the purpose is to reduce slash, to encourage landowners to do their own mitigation. And on kind of the bigger picture, we really want to just get more people aware that there's things that you can do on your own to reduce your own fuel risk and provide some opportunity for people to be able to get rid of that slash, um, and not have to bring it to the landfill. So, um, and then I, we're also trying to just get some awareness of which communities might want to do work in the future. So that's been a, a, a big push of, out of this. Um, we've worked with two communities so far. Um, last year, we did Sylvan Lakes and, um, and the, um, I'm blanking on the, the name of the trailer.
Non-View Village?
Non-View Village, yes. They had, uh, several piles, so that's a lot of these photos here. Um, and, uh, and they had already been working on their own mitigation, so the timing was kind of perfect. They had these piles that needed to be chipped, and we were able to help them out. The next project is, uh, is called Co-Swap. It's the Workforce Development Grant. Co-Swap is the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Program. Um, it's a newer grant that, um, came from the Department of Natural Resources. And actually, they do have two different grants, and Lake County, um, holds both of those. Um, there's a Landscape Resilience Grant as well that the State Forest Service holds. Um, we're not as involved in that, so I'm not gonna go into that one as much, but the Workforce Development Grant gave us twenty-five weeks of what's called SWIFT CREW time, and SWIFT CREWS are the State Wildland Fire Inmate Teams. And, um, so they're nonviolent offenders that have been trained, um, to fight wildfire, but when they're not on fires, they're doing fuels mitigation. And, um, this has been a, a really interesting and neat project. Normally, we get grant funding to actually do the project. In this one, we get weeks, um, and they do all the work, so no dollars, um, actually change hands, but it's almost a half a million dollars in value. And I think it's actually, from what I hear, um, it's probably gonna be even more than that. Um, but we've been working with Newmont Mining, um, with Lake County, um, Leadville Sanitation District, and, uh, CMC to, to do this project. Um, and we've almost gotten forty acres completed so far, so it's going really well. So the first area is near the community field. Um, the hash-marked area in red is the, the portion that's already been treated. We're looking at doing some more, um, this summer as well, particularly to, to go along the county road on the, kind of the southern portion of that project area. There's a whole lot more. There's a whole lot more work that can be done in this. We kind of identified a forested area in the yellow. So I think there's a whole lot more opportunity for to do work in this area with other grants. Same with this next area, the around the CMC campus. I think this is an important area in terms of protecting Leadville. But also, CMC is is an important area. So we've we've worked right near the campus. We did a shaded fuel break to protect the campus itself. And then we've been doing some patch cuts as well to to reduce, and you may have seen those on some of the recreational trails. Those were designed to to get rid of some really extreme dense forests. You can see that here on the the picture on the left. That's largely what a lot of these areas look like. And after we we did some patch cuts, we left some trees that were in good shape. And so hopefully those trees helped to rehabilitate the area as quickly as possible. But it's a, it's, I think they've done some tremendous work. All this wood that was is stacked up here was given away to the community as well. So it's all gone. We've got some burn. I'd say one of our bigger challenges right now is getting these burn piles burned. We've, we're working right now with the Department of Fire Prevention and Control to get those burned. And hopefully that'll happen next winter is what our goal is. All right. So our last project that I'll go over is the Natural Resources Damages Grant. So this was funding that was left over from the California Gulch work. And we got the the official name for the grants is the Upper Arkansas Comprehensive Watershed Restoration Project. And this is a three-part project forestry, which we're calling Uplands Watershed Protection for the purposes of this grant. It's a, that's one of the three focal areas. The other two are working on culverts, replacing undersized and perched culverts that the county is leading. And the other project is doing some mine reclamation that Trout Unlimited is is leading. I'm not going to talk anymore about those two parts, but there's a whole aspect of it that is is forestry work. And it's a multimillion dollar grant that's going to give us five hundred acres of of treatments. And so we've got these various focal areas. The Half Moon Area, Sugarloaf near Turquoise Lake, county land that's near the CoSwap area that I I mentioned previously. And we also put in the Evans Gulch area. I'll be honest, I'm not sure how much we're going to get done in that area. But it it's a potential work area as well. Probably the the biggest portion of this is the the Half Moon Area. We're partnering with the Forest, US Forest Service to to do three hundred and one acres of treatments. It's a mix of thinning and patch cuts that's all along the Half Moon Road. And it it's going to be a a pretty big project. This will be starting up potentially this fall. And if not, in the summer of 2025. We're anticipating this is going to be a little bit disruptive because of the fact that there's two fourteener trailheads. So I think we're going to try and time the work after Labor Day. So hopefully we minimize those impacts. But there's a a whole lot of of work that's going to happen throughout that that area. And then just on the other side of the forest boundary, we've worked with two private landowners. The larger one being Denala Water and a smaller one, private landowner that who owns a home right next to the the Forest Service Treatment Area. And we're getting those wrapped into the project as well. I I think we're we're shooting for about sixty acres of treatments on these private land side. But that's a I think this is a coming together really nicely where we're able to work on the the US Forest Service side and on the private land side to comprehensively address fuels. This is a a picture, I should also mention. So this is a picture on the Denala Water property. You can see some of that dwarf mistletoe there. And this is Sam Kehlin. He's our brand new Lake County Water Watershed Coordinator. So he's going to be taking over, I think, several of these projects here in my absence. And I I know that they're also going to be filling in a fourth layer as well. But Sam's, he's a really sharp guy. He lives in Lake County. So he's he's hopefully, we're excited that he's rooted in the community and going to be able to continue a lot of this work. The the Sugarloaf Property is a large private land property near turquoise that it's owned by a gentleman named Tim Costello. He's very conservation minded and is looking in kind of an amazing way, like big picture thinker, would like to bring biochar and sustainable forestry that could yield benefits for the county. We're just going to try and get started with some fuels mitigation right now with this grant. But there could be a lot more opportunity with this landowner in the future. So the the areas in pink are the the treatment areas that we're looking at doing on the private land side. But there's also BLM parcels that are in orange here. And we've got some other grant funding that we're pairing with the the Natural Resources Damages Grant to to do both sides, to do work on those BLM parcels as well. And so that's it for kind of the projects that we have now. But in the future, we're looking at applying for what what's called the Wildfire Ready Watersheds Grant, which comes from the Colorado Water Conservation Board. It's a planning grant that we're we're hoping to do in the twin in the Lake Fork Drainage around Twin Lakes. And just look at all potential projects, both forestry and more in stream, and how we could reduce impacts from a post-fire type situation. I think there's a lot of opportunity to continue to work with the BLM. They've got a lot. They've been preparing a lot of properties for environmental clearance, particularly in Iowa Gulch. So I think that's another promising avenue. And then the CoSwap funding, that's been a really good project. The crews like working here. It's been very successful so far. So I think that's one to keep going. And I should also mention the the Lake County Forest Health Council is something that's really been starting to meet regularly. And there's a a real momentum of organizations working together, communicating and planning together. So I see Arwick being a big part of that and continuing to partner with those folks. And that's all I have for today. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
I'm not sure I have any questions. That's great. I I feel like I had seen like each little bit of your presentation. But to see it all together is, that's actually really cool, just to see all that work across the whole landscape of the county. So thank you for for doing that.
I will say that there's, you know, this is just from our organization. The Forest Service has other projects. The the State Forest Service as well, National Forest Foundation. So we're there's a lot of really exciting things. And I'd give the county a lot of credit for helping to foster a lot of this work as well. There's a, there's been a lot of momentum, and it it seems like a really good trajectory.
Andy, I'm just wondering if you can can talk about your role with collaborating with some of those projects that like the Forest Service or BLM has going on? Like, are you kind of that central point of contact? Or how does that work to make sure that there's not duplication of efforts or or anything like that?
Yeah, that's a really good point. We we did actually, the Sugarloaf product or project is an example of that. There's a, there's a lot of different funding sources and a lot of people starting to to do work. And we had secured funding through the Natural Resources Damages. And Commissioner Mudge actually brought it to my attention that NFF and National Forest Foundation and the State Forest Service were putting in a grant to do work on the same property. And we realized that, wow, there's a lot more players and a lot more people looking to do work here in Lake County. We really need to to start communicating more. So that's where the Lake County, the Forest Health Council has been really, really important. Because now, instead of us all like working in our own kind of silo, we're working together. We're talking about where we can partner together and how we can help each other. So it's not a competitive environment. It's really more, there's plenty of work to get done, and how can we all help each other do it? So I think that we've, we kind of had that situation where we were maybe going to duplicate efforts. But instead, we're now partnering on that project. We just pooled all of our funding together, and we're working together. So so it's a, I I think there's a lot more communication that's happening so that we don't have any duplication of effort.
Great. And then is there a way that we can like put this PowerPoint on our website? Or just make it available for everyone to like click through it or see it or or something? I think that'd be really
Yeah, maybe we're we're trying to house a lot of the information on the emergency management website. So maybe we could link to this as a great overview. I was also going to mention that the two maps that Andy shows are two of many. There is, you know, as an appendices and in denim to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, there's a whole, there's a couple of their full reports that our partner has produced. And so that those are also available on the Emergency Management Website. And you can go into the the one report from CFRI. That's a lot of the modeling and mapping, which, yeah, there's there's many more maps as well. Those are kind of the two that 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 help the conversation the most. And and related to those specifically, if you get a chance to go back and look at it, you know, that the red and the blue and the purple map, you know, if we had ten million dollars only, we want to treat the red. If we had twenty, we want to do the purple, I think. I might have the purple and blue mixed up. But if we had forty, then that would be the largest, you know, return on the investment and impact for reduction of risk. And and a lot of the red, if not all the red, are really Forest Service lands. And so a lot of the projects that we're working on are in those purple and blue areas, particularly around the city of Leadville and in the Wui, the wildland urban interface for protection of those assets. And it's pretty exciting. Just, you know, we we have thousands of acres between just a few partners, even with just Newmont, the county and CMC to work on. And and we just need the time and the manpower, human power to get down on the ground to do it. So it is really been excellent that the Forest Health Council is a great venue to continue the coordination of those projects. Because there was, I mean, the Forest Service had done a lot of work around the adjacent parcels of Mountain View Village and Grand West Estates. And and that was kind of a good natural, naturally occurring coordination to continue work in those areas to protect those couple of communities. And eventually, you have to go back as well and and continue to work and keep it up, which we're seeing on the Forest Service properties on the east side of the Mountain View Village area. So it's, it's a it's a good system, I think.
I agree.
All right.
Okay. Well, thanks so much, Andy, and good luck on your next step.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to work with you, Andy. And I hope you get to continue that at the State Forest Service.
I hope so too, yeah.
All right. Take care. Thanks.
Sarah, do you have any other comments you want to make?
I don't.
We're, we sufficiently acknowledged. Pay attention to our desire. Okay, Agenda Item Number Three, Discussion and Consideration of a Recommendation for a Professional Services Agreement with SHG Advisors LLC for a Strategic Planning and Sustainability Services for the Establishing Interpreter Network and Community Assessment Need for Increased Cultural Competence Grant. Kristen Logan, you've been patiently online, but the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I am Kristen Logan, Deputy Director of Funding and Program Development over in Human Services, kind of sitting in for Janine today. I am the Grant Manager for our Interpreter Network and Language Access Grant that we have been working on. And we got it again this year with Hickpuff. It's an expansion grant from our grant from last year. And included in the grant application was some strategic planning. So we put an RFP out there in the fall. Unfortunately, we didn't get the type of proposals that we were looking for back then. So we tried again in December. And the deadline was the end of January. And this time, we got eight proposals from all across the country. Two of them, which were our top two proposals, were from Colorado. And the one that we would like your consideration and approval for is S E Advisors. They're based out of Conifer. It is a one-person firm. Summer Gather Cole is the Principal at SHG. Her resume stands financial and a strategic background. She has done work with various counties around the state, including Arapahoe, Douglas, Jefferson, Larimer. She was a CPA in a former life. And recently, she served for the newly formed Behavioral Health Administration at the state. She served as a senior advisor over there. So she's very well versed in initiatives around counties. And that's really why her proposal shined above the others. She does not have any specific ties to Lake. But we found that her county experience and her understanding of the key stakeholder groups was really put hers above the other proposals that we received. Part of her proposal includes attending meetings at CHSDA and CALFO, who kind of get the interest of other counties' feedback and interest in the interpretation needs that they have across the state. It is one of Janine's visions to have the Interpreter Network available to other DHS departments across the county. So we really need the strategic planning to kind of make the groundwork for that. So she came in under budget. We did have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget cap that we listed in the RFP along with one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollar travel allowance. She came in just a little under budget. But again, we really think she wasn't, she wasn't the lowest proposal. But we really see her value in the experience that she's had. So we do have a quick timeframe to work with her as well. We need to get everything wrapped up by the end of this fiscal year. And she does have in her plan to have the strategic plan deliverable by the end of May. So Chris and Liz helped put together this PSA, and we appreciate your consideration and happy to answer any questions that you have about the strategic planning piece or the grant itself.
I didn't have any further questions.
No, I don't either. Quick question I have, Kristen, being a one-person firm, does she plan to or or does she understand the resources available to do some more of that outreach? Does she need that in the community?
Yeah, she does have in her plan to reach out some of our area partners. And then also, internal staff at DHS was hoping to help out with that as well. And we also have our other contractor, Maria Carryon Ayers with Carryon Consulting, whom you all met last year. She's available to assist in that as well.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the PSA with SHG Advisors LLC.
So moved? I'll second.
Okay. And just a quick, Chris, I think you said that this has gone through.
Yeah, it's been vetted. It's ready to go.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
Then call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The PSA with SHG Advisors is approved. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion and Consideration of a PSA with Full Circle. Okay, agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Full Circle for Community Housing and Rental Support. I can kick this off um since Tim is out. Um, so this is just the, you know, actual agreement uh for that three hundred thousand that we allocated for rental assistance and other financial assistance for property owners in light of the property tax increases that we saw this year um in Lake County and across the state. Um, so again, just a little more, you know, clarity on how we're going to disperse that, some guardrails, um, our guidance on how it'll be spent and also reporting back to us. So maybe just point out two kind of high-level points um that I think are good. The one, the three hundred thousand will be dispersed in sort of tranches of fifty thousand, sort of as needed, which I think protects both us and Full Circle. So it'll, it'll be distributed as, you know, as, uh, as the need is actually out there in the community, rather than sort of sending it all over at once and kind of risking not, not spending it or just not having, uh, it just gives a little more, you know, check-in oversight on that. Um, there's some guardrails on the maximum amount award um per household or individual. Uh, and then some uh bullets on what kind of data they'll track for us. You know, we don't want, we don't wanna see every little application, but some high-level data on some characteristics of the households. And I think also some data on like how, how, how many applications aren't approved. So I think a good reasonable level. So, I think that was, that was really it, and I think this, oh, and um we did agree on the ten percent overhead uh for Full Circle, which I think is pretty reasonable for such a large uh, I mean, you know, pre- pre- pretty large undertaking to run the application process for this. Um, so, yeah, so, and again, this is just sort of negotiated with Full Circle. Um, Edalia, the head of Full Circle is online. I, 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 I don't know if anyone from Full Circle wants to add any comments, certainly welcome, welcome, Matt.
Good morning, everyone, or almost afternoon. Yeah, thank you so much, um, first of all, for this funding. I think the first, um, I was looking, I was just doing my director's report and in a spam of about two and a half weeks, that initial fifty thousand that we originally had requested, um, we were out and still had um a pretty large amount of pending requests. We have kept taking um applications um until we weren't, we weren't sure that we were gonna get the funding, but then we weren't sure that we weren't either. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't turning away any Everlake County residents um for this assistance. So we have been taking those, we've been, you know, we'll probably, um, if approved, we'll probably continue um going through and approving um a lot of those, those cases that we have pending. Um, and yeah, our FRC has our, which is our Family Resource Center, that's kind of where this is housed. Um, they have a good, we have a good structure there, they've been getting the hang of it, got a good practice. Um, and yeah, they've been very busy in adapting, so um, yeah, we're excited about this. The other thing too, we didn't even do a lot of heavy advertising on this like we will going in this next round. Um, and we, we had a lot of people coming in um already, so I'm sure we'll have a lot more.
Okay, cool.
Great.
Just a, a comment, and, and, and I, I think Jeff hit on this a little bit, but this is, you know, expanding um beyond rental assistance and to, to other assistance for homeowners. So um, I, yeah, I think we're really eager, Edalia, as I'm sure Jeff relayed to you, to understand who and, you know, who are those folks, what are their ages, or are they on fixed incomes? What are the conditions of their homes, you know, any of that kind of thing? So as you well know, we can just further weave and layer other available resources for them. Um, the, the one thing, and I think, I think the answer to this is just that there probably are so many that are in need or would request this that we wanna kind of help as many as we possibly can. But also, I, I think we're curious about, you know, who really needs some sh- maybe shorter term, but, or longer term, but, but, but not perpetual support? Like, you know, beyond maybe a, the, the two thousand limit? But, but the two thousand dollar limit, I think, was raised from the program before at a five hundred dollar limit, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
So, so people can come back for anything below that and in aggregate, or the sum of that support can um be up to two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For, for.
Definitely, yeah. And then we also have, we've, uh, other fundings, some small funding that we get from um Rocky Mountain Health Foundation. And also, we have some, seen some cases, not as many, but there have been a few where they're needing more than, than the two thousand dollar limit to cover a one-month rent. Um, so what we do to make sure, we wanna make sure that we're trying to really set up folks for success and it doesn't, it's not the situation of like, you get two thousand, figure out the rest on your own, and then there's still an eviction process. So we really try to help folks out and recommend them to those other programs um so that they can, you know, really, um, so that that can really set them up for success. Um, what we're seeing a lot right now is a lot of, like, not enough hours of work. Um, a lot of folks maybe in the construction or service industry, like, those hours are really low right now. And that's kind of what we're seeing, like, right now, I just need help because of this, and then I'll be able to kind of continue forward. Uh, but yes, you are correct, if somebody comes in and they don't use up their whole two thousand, we still have funding, they can come back for more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Sarah, I mean, Sarah and you, thanks for that exchange, cause yeah, I mean, I, I think I didn't say it. I mean, I, I, at least I, I think our view was that keeping people in their existing housing situation is like a, a really important pillar of the overall sort of county-wide, and that's sort of county with a little c. But, um, you know, county-wide efforts that a lot of organizations are doing on, on housing overall. Um, but again, I, I mean, yeah, um, just to say, it's not just a handout, it's, it's an important part of a bigger strategy, so. And, and to Sarah, your question, yeah, like, really learning from this program, what, what some of those like systemic or structural issues are that are causing people to be at risk of being unhoused is, is really, gonna be really interesting and helpful.
Yeah, and, and I wonder, Edalia, if there is a circumstance where um, an applicant has met that two thousand dollar limit, is there an exception circumstance? Or how, how does, how would you address that at Full Circle?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand your question, so if they're, like, rent is more than two thousand?
Yeah, like, if rent is more than two thousand, or, or the aggregate comes to more than two thousand dollars, um, is there an exception to that, to that cap where you, like, would you seek funding? Would you seek permission from county partners to say, hey, we have this individual that needs thirty-five hundred dollars? Can we make this exception in this application, or how does that work?
Yeah, we haven't run into that, so what we've run into is that kind of that first example that, that I gave is where we, then, um, it's like twenty-five hundred, so we recommend, I think that's the highest actually that we've seen um for, for, for those requests, that's what, I think that's the highest that we saw. So then we re- we recommend them to our other program, which is Rocky Mountain Health Foundation. And then from there, we also recommend them to overall, just anybody. Um, you know, we have Christian from C4 here helping with um energy assistance applications on Wednesday. So we have them talk to him, we, um, anything that can maybe supplement their other income. So we have the WinCome program, which really tried to um recommend and sign them up for any of those other programs. But um, I think in the future, I, I like what you said there, and I think I'll just, that's probably what we would do in the future if there is somebody that goes over that two thousand. Um, and there's no way for making it up any other way, and they're about to lose their housing, then reaching out to you all and see how you would feel about making some of those exceptions.
Okay, cool, but I think that's great. I don't, I think that that can be taken kind of on a case-by-case basis. And if it comes down to like more frequently than not, and we need to renegotiate or change the, the agreement, then I think we can do that as those come up. But I just wanna make sure that, like, the overall goal is to keep people in their situation. And I, I personally am not tied to two thousand dollars, and that being like the end-all, be-all. So I, I would be, I would welcome us working in a collaborative way to make sure that if it's over that, we're still.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely, I wouldn't be surprised if we, we reach out and maybe um propose maybe some changes like that.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll look for a motion to approve the PSA with Full Circle for Community Housing and Rental Support.
So moved, second?
Great, um, any other?
Nothing further for me.
Uh, great, then I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the PSA with Full Circle is approved.
Thank you, Edalia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of a recommendation for a PSA with JVA Incorporated for Harrison Ballfield's Sanitary Flow and Water Flow Project funded by a Dolebrand. Uh, Jackie Meeleham, you are up.
So you should have any packets and memos from Michael. Um, so Michael Yoman, our consultant, who's helping us to navigate this whole grant expansion. So funding has um helped us with this. So the Dolebrand, um, as part of it, we are considering developing Harrison Ballfield. Um, we wanna make sure that Harrison is appropriate site for that. And the first part of master planning the site is going to be conducting a sanitary and water flow study just to make sure we have some concerns um that specifically, not so much with water, but with sanitation, that there might be some hurdles or some reasons why maybe it's not used for that. Um, so as part of that, we've released in January two uh an RFP, and we had two responding uh firms, we had JVA and Marson Engineering. And we did meet with the Development Subcommittee for the Northern County Regional Housing Authority to talk through uh the different proposals that we received. And the group did agree that uh JVA made the most sense. They came a little bit higher than Marson, but because of their relationship with Red Bull Sanitation, we thought that, um, and, and also that, and that the study will help the future master planning efforts. We thought that going with that was the best option. And so my rural planner um is recommending, that's Michael's company, is recommending that you award the consulting engineering services for Harrison Ballfield study, uh, full study to JVA in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, which is within budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do not have any questions.
I don't either, I think it makes all the sense in the world to create efficiencies and work with the, the folks who ultimately be getting o- other authorization and permission from, so.
Same here, again, I'll call for um a motion to approve the PSA with JVA Incorporated for Harrison Ballfield's Sanitary Flow and Water Flow Project.
So moved, I'll second.
Great, um, we're good. Discussion, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the PSA with JVA Incorporated is approved. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
And on to number six, uh, consideration of PSA with Marson Engineering LLC for Affordable Housing Infrastructure Design and Construction Oversight. Um, two sites to be developed by Lake County Government funded by a Dolebrand.
Okay, so this is our second RFP, um, and we only had one respondent to um this RFP, um, and that was Marson Engineering. And the Development Subcommittee also reviewed uh this proposal, and it was decided that Marson did demonstrate we need an expertise to successfully complete the required design, uh, construction oversight and survey work. And they will be hiring a subcontractor to help with the soil management plan for the site remediation as outlined in Phase Two of the, um, I'm sorry, in the Phase Two Environmental Report. And they did come within budget, um, and so my rural planner is.
Sorry, I just, um, nope, sorry.
Uh, is recommending that uh we execute the contract with them not to exceed uh the two hundred fifteen thousand dollar financial service agreement as approved by that.
My, my thought was just, um, maybe on the last one, we did not include in our motion not to exceed the one hundred thousand dollars. And maybe we want to.
I think it's in there though, I think the con- it's in the contract, so I think you're fine.
Okay, perfect.
He's, he's being very careful about that.
Alright.
Well, and the, the only thing I would add to that is, as Jackie alluded to, um, the only thing we're waiting for, Marson came back on the PSA with the request on limit their liability exposure to the amounts of their current insurance. So I've asked for is a copy of their insurance certificate to see what those amounts are. Um, and to pay any issue that they, but just, you might wanna do any final legal review so we get that insurance.
Okay.
Okay.
Does Michael have anything online, or?
He does not.
He's got it, he's got it.
He's got another one on Michael.
Mi- Michael Irwin.
Yeah, he's got an agreement on here later.
Alright, I just, I knew he.
Been waiting for a while.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll call for, or look for a motion to approve the PSA with Marson Engineering LLC for Affordable Housing Infrastructure Design and Construction Oversight. I have a pending legal review, especially around the issue of insurance liability coverage.
So moved, second?
Okay.
Nothing more for me.
So, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so PSA with Marson Engineering LLC is approved. Thank you, Jackie. And Michael and the whole team.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for County Engineering Services to include review for design and construction administration. Anne, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much, so this is SEH, who has been the county land use um engineering firm uh for over a decade, as well before I joined the county. And so we are just asking um for a renewal of their annual agreement. Um, Chris has reviewed um uh the uh contract, and so we're just asking to be able to continue that relationship in Lake County.
And it's pretty identical to last year's agreement, just with a minor update to base, I think, is all it was. Um, so, yeah.
No questions for me.
Okay.
No for me, Andy.
Almost approves Short Elliott Hendrickson uh agreement and engagement with Lake County.
I'll second.
So, okay, then call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the PSA with SEH Inc. is approved. Um, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Paul Clarkson to provide professional building and land use services.
Um, so we have continued um uh since uh Paul retired as Director of the Department um to engage with him on an as-needed basis um to add capacity to building and, uh, as well as um having him help with added capacity to zoning reviews for building permits. Um, we had a, created kind of a training program for some of our building staff to try to um kind of uh use their, or, or train them to be able to effectively do zoning review. However, um, there's been occasion to understand that it's really helpful to have a professional planner reviewing building permits. And so, um, that's one um place that we're plugging Paul in now. He is um the second reviewer on building permits. We recently had an variance request that had it been um effectively, uh, we had a second pair of eyes on it, we may have caught um that prior to a variance application. So we just wanna make sure that we've got a good checks and balance. Um, Paul certainly has um uh thirty-plus years of experience. So doing a zoning review for a building permit is certainly something that he can um very efficiently do for the department. And I just wanna ensure that we have a second pair of eyes on those, and so we can avoid that kind of um situation there. Paul also has the ability to um come in uh and kind of plug and play on assisting with um development review, just given his experience in Lake County and again, his um background in planning. So uh we do continue to use him. We will see that um when we um bring him in on a development review, we are um passing through a certain amount of his um uh time to the applicant. And I would say this is still very much at a discounted rate if you looked at the comparison of the other planning professionals um that we're engaged with, that pastor expense is still at about fifty percent of what we're um normally kind of seeing as a market rate. So again, not wanting, you know, wanting to make sure that we're providing the very best um service for our community and in de- develop, develop. and in de- development review. But I would say that pass through expense has been very mindful of not driving up the expense on applications. Uh, so again, that pass through expense is at about half of what, um, those tasks that Paul performs for the internal review. Um, um, is, is, is still a, a, a very discounted rate of what we would see if we went into engagement typically with planning professionals. So, um, I think we're very fortunate to have kind of that situation in place, so. Just ask for consideration of continuing that engagement.
I, I appreciate trying to reduce that cost and, and it seems to make sense with somebody who's familiar with our code and, uh, and our department, so, um, I'm sure applicants will be appreciative of that. And it seems that this is, this is on an as needed basis, um, until the county indicates a termination of the engagement with Paul.
Exactly.
Perpetuity.
Yeah, I think it's probably good to note too that, um, you know, we, we did get our application in for the planning capacity grant. Fifteen, um, thank you to Jackie, um, with helping me, um, yeah, until the wee hours. Um, the, but we were successful in getting our grant application in, um, which will, um, then, you know, be looking at adding more capacity, um, between the grant opportunity of awarded as well as the position for the planner too that was approved at the board. So we will be looking at recruitment, adding, this will be a year that we're really looking to increase planning capacity exponentially in the department. And so, um, this just aids in kind of that interim space as well as then as a part of an as needed basis.
Cool.
Thank you. Um, I have no other questions. I'm all move to approve the PSA with Paul Clarkson, um, for engagement with the Community Planning and Development Department.
I'll second.
And call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, PSA with Paul Clarkson is approved. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Um, okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with A1 chip speeds, uh, blue chip seal for asphalt repair. Uh, Michael Irwin, thank you for being patient. You have the floor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know if you heard me the last time. Um, so this is just to continue the chip sealing on County Road Ten all the way to where we, um, did reclamation my last year at County Road Ten M. This was coded, but if this is actually in the budget already, it was approved by you guys in the budget. It's just because of the amount of following procurement policies, so we need to get permission signatures.
And it is the standard county's PO.
Great. No questions here.
Right, if we just, um, are, uh, uh, prices kind of stabilized now for asphalt or?
Um, at least for this, they did not raise the price on us from last summer, so I'm crossing my fingers.
Yeah.
They, once we find this, they can't change it, so that's good.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, things were so crazy for a while there.
And that's one of the reasons that I got it in front of you guys now, so we can get it scheduled and get it early in the season.
Yeah. Great. No further questions for me, so, um.
Me neither.
I'll move to approve the PO with A1 chip seal for asphalt repair, uh, under guidance of Phil works.
I'll second.
Great, okay, then call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so PO for A1 chip seal is approved. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Um, agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of a second amendment to the PSA with Teak Symington to provide remote and onsite, onsite election preparation services for Lake County.
Yeah, so, um, Teak was incredibly helpful last year in our election. So this is already in the budget, her ten thousand dollars to keep her on call services for the following three elections. Um, I think we've already picked up a quite bit that we learned from her from last year or so. Except for some on-call services should be here on election day to smooth that out. But otherwise, it should cover all three elections and not just the first one.
Great, yeah. No questions here.
Yeah.
None for me either. I, actually, I do have one quick question. Can you vote in person with the presidential primary? Oh, it's.
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's not.
The S P C will be open on Monday.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thanks, Tracy. Okay, no questions for me.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the PSA with Teak Symington to provide remote and onsite election preparation services for Lake County.
I'll second.
Great, and call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the PSA with Teaks number ten is approved. Agenda item eleven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with LEDs LLC for licenses to the following software, cash tendering system, recording core system, e-recording system, web search and marriage license.
So, um, I'm sure you realize that LEDs has been our recording vendor for a long time. And, um, John was instrumental in giving us that hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar grant last year for e-recording services. Um, so this is just a increase in fees for the share, it's a minor increase from, uh, ten thousand four hundred and twenty to eleven thousand forty, um, for the basic core recording system and then some of the document, um, storage that it maintained down in Denver on the front range, so.
Um, and I wanted to, I don't know if you saw my email from Pridey on this. The current agreement that we have with, with Leeds or how it's pronounced is, it was a five-year agreement, um, signed in two thousand eighteen, and it has an automatic one-year renewal provision. So technically already renewed in September, twenty twenty September one, twenty twenty-three. And then after, so it's coming up on renewal again, September twenty twenty-four, at which point if the county wants to, it could renew it for an additional three years to run until twenty twenty-seven. And the proposed new contracts on this simple, the only thing changes is the fees. So I'm not sure why we need to enter into a new agreement versus just having an amendment to the one that we have to adjust the fees and stuff. And so I didn't know if there was, uh, freeze, if there are different scope of services or something, we can just do that through a minute because my concern would be entering into a new five-year agreement, starting that five-year clock over versus now the county's in a one-year renewal cycle and can terminate without being obligated through that five-year period if something issue were to decide something different or whatever.
Well, yeah, and I think in the past too, and with all the new ADA compliance, I am really curious, Tracy, if you've thought about going out to bid for services for the platform and also to, to learn what other platforms are offering for all the compliance issues that we're having to meet mid-year this year.
Are you talking about being able to, um, have the website read to you? Is that what you're?
Yeah, part of it, I think, but like with the recording or the accessibility for folks to, to get on there. I mean, and, and I also have other questions about, you know, I think, does it still remain that if you go on I County as a member of the public, you have to pay like two hundred dollars to get to be a member of some sort?
Dollars a day and two hundred for the month.
Okay.
But the, um, I don't know if Tom has gotten it up on the website yet, but all of, uh, minutes and agendas are, have been scanned in back to twenty sixteen and loads are free.
Right, on your website.
Yeah, but, uh, my, our concern, I think, is based on what we're looking at with that is if they'll meet the accessibility requirements that going to affect July first, which means they have to be searchable and all that kind of stuff loses.
So I did reach out to Ashley from Leeds and I asked kind of where they're at. Um, and I didn't get any details and I'm very interested in that, but they did say that that platform would be compliant as of July. I did play around on I County on Thursday. And it looks like some of our documents are compatible and ADA accessible, and it looks like some of ours are not. Um, so it's more than just having a screen reader and having that optical character recognition. Some of the documents have graphics in it and so getting that all text behind it. So I think that we need to do a little bit more research with the clerk's office in partnership with the, um, kind of task force that's had developed around it as well as with Leeds to see what they mean by, yep, we'll be compliant, they'll be compliant. But how will our content, the county's content be compliant by July?
Okay.
Okay, um, you might want to include me on those emails.
Uh, yeah, I checked in with Vera and that's what Vera directed me to do, so I'm happy to forward that communication to you. But also I encourage you to come to the work session on the twenty-seventh, where we're really going to roll it out and talk about the different pieces and parts.
Again?
Yeah.
Haven't gotten that email.
I sent that email, actually. Yeah.
Yeah, it's because.
And I think you nominated someone to come on your behalf, um, but you're welcome to attend as well.
So can we, can we continue? Cause it's gonna take, I mean, it's gonna take time to figure out and also explore any other potential options that may work better for the county. Can we continue this on the current?
Yeah, there, I don't, it, it, all we need to do, if there's an increase in fees, technically, they should have been brought forward September when the current agreement, right now, the current agreement renewed and for a year. And so technically, even county is, well, we already have you on a contract for this. And so if they're coming in midstream on the current contract to increase the fees and stuff, that's something y'all can consider. But technically, they're under contract till September or the end of August right now on their current, what they currently offer.
Right, and do, do you know how hard it is? So if you looked into that, like how hard it would be to amend it mid-year or?
Well, no, we can do an amendment, just an amendment to the contract they signed last year to amend for the fees and that kind of stuff. If we need to, if that wasn't done in September, if we need to do it for this year, then, yeah, you can amend it for the rest of this year. I just don't recommend at this point, um, entering into a new five-year contract based on.
Right.
You know, you're concerned, I'm concerned about the, the compatibility with all the ADA requirements and what we need to do, make sure it's the best fit, and if there are other resources out there. I just recommend amending it for now and before September, when it would renew again, decide what direction you want to go in terms of if you want to put it out for an RFP or if you want to go forward with them. If they show they have the capacity to make sure, they can show that they're going to be fully compliant with those, uh, requirements July first.
Are they a Colorado-based company?
Yes.
Where they are, they are, okay, okay. So they should, it, it would, I mean, you would assume that they would be able to meet all of the requirements that we're going with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so here, I mean, we did, we're definitely not risking any like gap in immediate coverage because we had the automatic rollover and a hundred percent hearing you that we need to make sure you and whoever else want, we'll, we'll make sure the right invites and communication is happening internally. But we have a work session or meeting scheduled internally.
Next week on the twenty-seventh.
Great. Um, great, then.
And the invitation for that was sent to all elected officials and all department chairs asking that they either attend or send a delegate from their department who could report back on.
Yeah.
The broad overview and kind of how we're approaching the planning for this. So it, it's, you know, not a clerk's quarter specifically, but just like a, all, all of our systems thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, cause everybody's gonna have to understand, like, how to reformat individual documents so that when they are, then.
Right, we can do all we want and pay people to get our websites up, up to speed or our software is up to speed. But then if somebody adds something the next day, it becomes out of compliance again. So everybody will need a, a level of training and that's what we'll discuss next.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be happy to entertain that, uh, like the amendment of the fees and then I think it'd be great to, to see what we learn, at least between now and July, um, together across all those platforms and if we might need to or want to dis- or discover something that might be.
Yeah, depending on, I know Liz has really been digging into this with Sarah as well, that just depending on how heavy of a lift it is, there are a number of counties that because of the logistics of coming into compliance or doing one of two things, they're either deciding that they're not going to off the documents online anymore. If you want something, you can make a request and then individually, which I think would be a huge staff, um, burden, or to hire a consultant to come in and review everything and make sure it is compliant before July first. So I think we're still collecting some information on that. In next week's work session, we'll help inform some of that process as well. But we're almost at the end of February, so we're running out of time pretty quick. And I don't know how many consultants have the level of expertise we might need to engage before, to get it done before July first.
Okay.
So, but a lot of the smaller counties are just saying, we can't afford to do it. It's on those, yet again, unfunded mandates that have been made without any resource funding to, to come into compliance.
Okay.
Um, so Tracy, do you think we can go back with a request to maintain the agreement we have with a amendment to the fees?
I think you can just approve the schedule.
If that's the, yeah, there, and what we can do is put together just the amendment. And I was gonna say, I hate to bring it back to you again, but all we would need, we can do, we can do an amendment to the existing one to adopt a new schedule.
Okay.
Schedule this, uh, in the current agreement. That's gonna be fine.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so I'll move to, um, uh, amend our current agreement with LEDs recording system, um, to adopt the new schedule.
Fee schedule.
Fee schedule.
I'll second.
Okay.
Um, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
Great, so, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, so, again, just to reiterate what the motion was. So to approve the amendment of the existing contract, but with the new fee schedule being reported back. Great, okay. We all good on agenda item number eleven, discussion and guidance to staff?
Yeah.
Um, Tracy, you did? With, with where we ended up?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Um, agenda item number twelve, discussion and consideration of the ratification of Independence Pass twenty twenty-four annual operating plan. Sarah.
Um. Sorry, I wasn't listening. Oh, yeah, independent stuff, okay. Um, so this is an annual contract that we are in agreement with, with Fitkin, the Forest Service, um, in Lake County. And I think maybe around the time period, forgive me, I forget, twenty twenty, twenty twelve, um, toilets were constructed up at the top of Independence Pass. So we enter into this, um, agreement every year and, um, our fees changed last year. I think we increased them by three hundred dollars, um, which is about a fifteen or seventeen hundred dollar contribution. Um, sorry, I haven't pulled up right now, but, um, pretty minimal. Fitkin County bears most of that cost, um, and then the Forest Service does the administration for the cleaning and everything. And, uh, part of the, we did have a offline conversation with the Forest Service, um, and, uh, a couple of the options if folks were, I think folks, partners were curious about. I think they had internal conversations to have as to where this was being allocated from their own budgets and whether they could get creative. Um, uh, so that, one of the objections or, or concerns that was brought up across the group um, was remedied by suggestions to go have, um, some internal conversations, um, among Fitkin County departments. But this, and the other option was to close the toilets. I think that would be, um, a pretty bad idea. People would be, there'd be human waste all over the place, um, seeing that it takes over an hour to get up and down each side. Um, but happy to hear any other suggestions. Otherwise, it's, should be pretty boilerplate and just kind of a matter of housekeeping.
Yeah. Any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, great. I will make a motion that we approve the ratification of the Independence Pass twenty twenty-four annual operating plan.
You'll second?
No, further discussion for me.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, so the twenty twenty-four annual operating plan for Independence Pass is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last full agenda item, uh, thirteen, commissioners will go into executive session for the following purposes, to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real personal or other property pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four A, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS. Section twenty-four six four oh two four E. And B, to hold a conference with the county attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS. Twenty-four six four oh two four B. And do we need to discuss who you want to invite into executive session? I'm assuming Jackie? This housing.
And was Ann gonna join us?
Okay, and Schneider.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jackie has said I'd be invited also.
And the county attorney.
And, yeah, and county attorney, sorry, I sort of assumed that since it's listed in thirteen B.
So I'll move to going to executive session for the purposes read aloud by the chair.
I'll second.
Great, and call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. So we go into executive session, we'll take a quick break, uh, courtroom here.